Back there.
Yeah, you're good. Sit back and eat. Okay. You guys can eat, you've got your box to the kitchen. Amy, have you eaten?
I'm shocked.
A cookie?
No, I have just.
You want to share my salad with me? I'm not going to give my egg to Miss Campbell, but I will share it with you.
Good afternoon, the workshop for the September twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen is now in session. Pam Rolke, please.
Mrs. Belber? Present.
Ms. McCusell? Present.
Mrs. Destin?
Present.
Ms. Trusick?
Present.
And Miss Campbell?
Present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The purpose of this workshop is to provide information regarding curriculum and also to have a discussion on legislative priorities. First, we'll hear from Jane Klein and Stephanie Sullivan, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary and Secondary Leading and Learning. Ladies.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity. We are going to spend a little bit over an hour with you talking about our vision for excellent instruction, our trends that we're seeing in our data, some of a deeper glimpse into our work for this year with our priority schools. We're going to talk about some of our plans for this year and how we have identified the trends and levels of support. So, we're going to turn it over to Steph, who's wanting...
So, the first, um, up to fifteen or so slides, we wanted to present them a little differently to you guys. We utilize Performance Matters, which is our district-wide data portal. And we wanted to use that because it mimics what every classroom teacher, every administrator, and everybody in this district can see. So, we, of course, access district-wide data, classrooms access classroom-wide data, and administrators use it. So, instead of the typical graphs, we wanted to show you the kind of information at our fingertips. And the first one is just basic demographics. When you log on to the portal every day, you get a dashboard with demographics and just, uh, not a huge difference over years, so we'll move quickly by that, but you can see our ethnic and racial, um, background as well as male and female.
Oh, are you doing bad things?
And then, uh, this slide, you did bad things!
That, don't touch. So, this slide, um...
One second, why is it shaking?
Is it me eating it?
It usually does.
Is it me shaking the table?
It's the man that does it. You probably just haven't noticed it before.
I don't know what you're talking about.
It's like, okay, nauseous.
Anyway, uh, live every day. We're also monitoring our different demographics from pre-reduced lunch to English language learners and our ESE students. And this was captured about two weeks ago, so this is live to a certain day. Uh, we are in the aggressive pre-reduced lunch process gathering time, which is why this is a little lower than we normally see. But again, it's live every day and it helps us identify our changing patterns. Another thing that we can see live every day is our lovely attendance.
And as you can see, our...
I'm forgetting that.
Our grade level of greatest concern is kindergarten.
I couldn't tell, um, when I was looking at the form, it was kindergarten or fifth grade. I thought it was fifth grade.
Kindergarten.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
So, today, live from yesterday's data, ten point eight six percentage of our kindergarten students were absent. So, we had a range of six percent in eighth grade, over almost eleven percent in kindergarten that were absent. So, we look at this, like Stephanie said, on the dashboard, that our schools are using this. And I know Miss Campbell just helped Turner with a message on Facebook.
Jupiter.
Jupiter, Jupiter, I'm sorry.
Attendance matters, yeah.
Attendance matters because they're seeing this problem. So, we're monitoring, uh, we're also encouraging, making certain that our schools are making those calls to families and, um, so that we can get our attendance back up to where it needs to be. But our kindergarten and our preschool attendance rate...
First grade.
And first grade, man, those are the three that... And as an elementary principal, it was always a struggle and you literally have to sit down with parents and say, this is how much instructive time you're missing, this is how much math they're missing, this is how much English language arts they're missing. So, it is, um, it does drop our work.
Compulsory attendance or kindergarten attendance.
Now, conversely, um, you'll see some remarkably strong attendance for our seventh graders. But unfortunately, the productivity of their behavior when they're there each and every day is, um, at, uh, conflict.
That's why the parents, that makes sense, parents are...
So, in addition, again, to our daily tracking of attendance, daily monitoring of different data points, our system also allows for a quick dashboard review of discipline incidents. And that's a really important, uh, thing to be viewing as patterns. Without question, our middle grades are, are grades consistently in the high. There's the occasional month where that's not true, but seven, eight, and nine, um, without question are our grade levels where you see consistent spikes in discipline infractions. And so, that gives my office, Student Services, a lot of information in continuing to, uh, try to get more model programs around transition programs and some of the things that we're doing for student conduct in our, in our middle schools that we obviously haven't solved yet. But it's an ongoing, um, piece of work where we're trying to make sure that we can improve that in school.
But you can see the kindergarten, um, spike there at the beginning of the year, the first line green. They're learning how to, um, acclimate to school. And so, that consistency of coming to school every day helps, uh, with that, so... But you can see from last year how they, um, tracked off to, uh, less infractions. So, it's that kindergarten at the beginning that's...
Is that seventh grade because they're just going into middle school and they're feeling the pressure of...
It's everything, right? It's everything we know logically about seventh graders and hormones. It's about transitioning into a new school after being in the same school. It's a time where a lot of parents, um, encourage social media use in their students and they sometimes provide them maybe more autonomy because they think that's a good idea. It's a little bit of everything. They're suddenly changing seven different classrooms from having been in a stationary environment, um, but we know it. So, what's important to us is when we know these patterns are evident, it's our responsibility to try to tackle those issues and try to minimize them. Um, we're working a lot with our elementary friends to see sixth grade as a much more stronger transitional opportunity. Um, a lot of schools are starting to departmentalize in sixth grade and we're looking at some semester splits. So, by second semester of, let's say, sixth grade, we would love them to give them some more autonomy, just like second semester of eighth grade, like my middle schools, to really help transition them into ninth grade. And so, you know, my perspective is we know this is a phenomenon for a million different reasons. We have to try to counteract it and outsmart it if we will. Um, but again, what's cool about all of this data, it is on the login dashboard that is available to all our school leaders and all our teachers. And that's something that we find powerful because information is useful. Probably, yes. Um, I just probably need to get you all LinkedIn, but as soon as you log in, all of this information is on your dashboard.
We can only read it, we can't mess it up, right?
You can't mess it up. It, it pulls data every night from our AS400, our favorite, like, state-of-the-art technology, AS400. It pulls nightly, no offense, Mr. Tiedem, uh, it pulls nightly from that and then adds it in this accessible way for teachers, um, to be able to make instructional decisions.
What are the teachers looking at after, we're seeing district-wide and then those things, school-wide, what are they looking at?
Their class, their school, their classroom.
Okay.
And so, a teacher's going to see...
I mean, on this particular page, the discipline page.
I'm going to say, I believe, classroom as well, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that view. I'll have to get my, uh, certain person that I know that is a teacher, just to double check that.
Do you guys drill down between two teachers teaching the same courses at a school and notice discipline in one, not discipline in another?
A- absolutely, that is pretty much...
That's principal, right?
Yeah. Standard administrative review, um, might find an opportunity to, um, provide some additional instructional strategies, sometimes some additional support. Curriculum instruction is generally our first step of classroom management and then, um, we go from there.
I'd like that you, I mean, it's no surprise, like you said, the seventh grade. I mean, just really, it's no surprise to me, especially in August.
And they're there every day, right? There are bad attendants.
So, that's no surprise. So, I'd like that you're looking at tackling, okay, what can we do to make it easier when they come from an elementary school and go to, uh, high school?
So, yeah. Yeah, we definitely have work to do on improving transition from that, um, and so, we're having a lot of conversations.
We have a lot of conversation about transition.
There's a lot of good things going on, though, now, that we're building on. It's not like it's flat. There's, there's boot camps, there's schools are coming down, they're going up the last... I mean, there's, there's some stuff, we're going in the right direction, I didn't want to do it wrong.
There's, there's absolutely a lot of, um, activities.
Yeah.
Um, but we want to center it more from like what all students from tier one are experiencing.
So, we're going to transition just a little bit into, um, a little bit of the FSA and we're looking at it a little bit differently by looking at the, um, students' achievement by the sub-scores. So, as you can see, the integration of knowledge and ideas district-wide, so this is all of our, our students is, um, our, um, our greatest struggle. But when we look at this, we're looking at, you know, you hear us say quality text, complexity of text, um, aligned materials. That measures all of that. And when we're looking at, you know, our, our level threes are, are strong there, but look at the percentage we have in level one and that's unacceptable because we want every child to have the same opportunity. And so, as we go through, we wanted you to have the information of what this looks like. So, on CPOMs, if you're not looking at CPOMs, if you haven't been on CPOMs, it's a great, um, just a great wealth of standards and what the instruction does look like, it has sample lessons, and our teachers all have access to that. That would be what we're looking for when we talk about standard-aligned instruction. These are the things we're looking through when we're, um, and we need our students to master.
Yeah, so, for, you know, the data is the starting point. So, that graph that I, we showed you on the previous slide, teachers see that at their classroom level. So, this tells us at the district level, integration of knowledge and ideas is our weakest area. Well, what does that mean? So, we want to know what do children require and the data gives us some really good information around that. And so, for the other ones, we're not going to bullet out the actual standards. We just wanted to give you one good example of how we utilize that information. Jane?
Oh, so, when we're talking about our math, you know, it all starts with, you know, our greatest gap is that function.
Sorry. I just wanted to underline functions.
That's algebraic thinking. That is the beginning of the algebraic thinking, that's that process that we actually begin in kindergarten. And we're strengthening in it, but again, it's our greatest weakness. Followed by the geometry, which aligns as well. We have to, we have to begin at pre-K in kindergarten with these concepts because our students, it is our state standard. And, and as we talk with parents and we talk with, um, schools and we keep saying, but is it aligned to the standard? The standard is what we're measuring. And so, um, again, functions, we've got work to do with functions.
So, in regards to algebra, since it's a hot topic, you'll see some subsequent slides breaking out the grade levels of algebra. So, overall, this red should give you a heart attack like it gives me every day and night.
Does that say functions?
It functions in my life, yes. So, district-wide, and we've talked for a number of years about our sort of disproportionate lack of achievement in math versus ELA and some of the other areas, um, to remind you that we've added progress monitoring this year, so we're really looking forward to that impact. Um, but since this is kind of hard to tell the entire story, we broke it up by grade levels. And this is a difficult graph, so I want to make sure I give you some context. Remember, the data we're showing you is by current students. Because again, how do we utilize that information to develop their skills? And so, the eighth graders took it as seventh graders, the ninth graders took it as eighth graders, and the tenth graders took it as ninth graders. Um, because we're looking at our current student pool and their strengths. And this one takes a little bit more time to look at, but what you can see is the percentage of level ones and our students that take it in ninth grade is rather dramatic. And the increase, of course, um, the sooner they take it, which is not a surprise. And I referenced to some of you guys informally, but formally, we did a five to six-year study to look at students in levels three, four, and five over a historical time period on when they succeed most in algebra. The state had done a detailed study and I, of course, wanted to mimic it for Brevard Public Schools. And both state and Brevard Public Schools identify that even a low level three is more likely to pass algebra in eighth grade. Obviously, all of that, there's a ton of factors on like student diligence, teacher, materials, you know, content. There's not a formula, but it's a base point of what we look at. And so, this is giving you those patterns there. And then, this next one is giving it to you by, again, the sub-score level. So, the main categories of algebra and modeling, functions and modeling, and statistics. Interestingly, um, I've been doing my second round of algebra teachers this year and they are, uh, much more aware that we are struggling in how we're delivering our instruction around statistics. My division's working pretty intensely on it and we're actually combining resources to tackle these standards because it's pretty clear that even our strong students, this is a pretty weak performance for a strong student. And so, we're putting a lot of support into that this year and we've made some modifications on that. And that, I know, is a pretty meaty slide, so I wanted to give you a second to look at it.
Don't you think this is going to tie into trying to put kids into algebra that may or may not be ready, in my personal opinion? But don't, I see, I look at this and I see what you're saying. Tenth grade, wow, if you take it in tenth grade, and, and the slide before, not necessarily just this one, but they're struggling more starting and taking it in tenth grade, but there's a reason... I don't know how to say this without sounding... Your absolute right of students aren't going to be taking algebra in tenth grade, I wouldn't think. Like, you would, you would have been...
No, no, these are taking it in ninth grade.
Year before.
These took it the year before.
Okay.
So, these students took it in ninth grade.
Which isn't a terribly awful necessarily time to take it. Like, historically, that was a normal time to take algebra, but not anymore.
Correct. What we're seeing is when students are not engaging with rigorous content steadily, you know, from sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade, the gaps in, you know, absolute performance, but really in schema and in, and in development around complex thinking, we, we sort of struggle there. And so, the continuous engagement with challenging content. That being said, I'll never say a hundred percent's a hundred percent's a hundred percent. I'll say, we have to look at the data to make sure we're not using non-cognitive reasons for denying students an opportunity to take algebra. Because what we found with a hundred percent certainty, not gray and not at the state, in Brevard Public Schools, non-cognitive reasons were utilized to not recommend students for algebra. And so, our philosophy is that every student gets every opportunity to succeed and that we want to look at the variety of factors and everything we know about all the factors. We even throw in their ELA scores in looking at it, on what is their profile of student who can succeed, but blindfolded to their demographics, to their pre-reduced lunch status, and to even, um, behavior, right? Because that's part of it as well. But we also find that students, when they're not engaged in interesting content, we also see an escalation of behaviors as well. So, it's a seesaw. It is a fine line of the right student and the right placement. But we know for sure from enormous amounts of data at the state level in Brevard, a student that is a low level three in seventh grade is more likely to be successful in algebra in eighth grade than in ni- in ninth. And it's a huge data set. So, we start with that paradigm and then we look at everything else. We look at all the other factors of student achievement to make a recommendation to give a student an opportunity to succeed. Um, it's a starting point because we know that that's true, they do better there. You know, we've got middle school teachers that are more about the middle school child and they're teaching with a combination of skill sets. And I'm not saying our high school teachers don't, but on the aggregate, our middle school teachers are more inherently use more strategies for the child as opposed to just delivering content. So, we, we also think informally that that's a part of the success as well.
Uh, Dr. St...
Sorry.
Well, I'll just add, I was at FAD's conference a couple of weeks ago. One of our breakout sessions was around districts initiatives to, uh, ensure rigorous access to algebra one, particularly in middle school. And I was thrilled that we were leading the way in our efforts and our systemic approaches and the supports we were providing to our, our teachers and the, the looks we were making and, and even in the sixth grade to prepare students for algebra by the end of middle school that, uh, other districts were asking us what we were doing. So, it, and, and it was work that they were doing as well or, uh, beginning and some continuing, so.
And, and it's not perfect because children change. So, they might suffer substance abuse or something at the home or something to where the data doesn't tell the story of that child's success and we know that. You know, we know that, again, that's our starting point and then we work the entire puzzle of factors around trying to make that placement.
Do we layer this to show, like, possibly avid schools and not avid schools? Do you see what I mean? Like, are you able to layer in to see those kind of implementations?
We sure can, I don't have it today.
No, no, the only reason I'm saying is that I think that would show a higher amount, which would advocate...
So, ideally, what we have found in full disclosure is where the avid student in middle school should be in algebra. They are not at the rates that even avid expects them to be. So, that is, Miss Veda, oh, Miss Veda, I have to go to another meeting. She's, uh, she's analyzing all that as we speak. Because it's designed perfectly just for that child, that level three student in algebra in eighth grade. Avid's designed to be a support for that child in their two days a week. But they expect to see students taking a course, especially the middle schoolers, algebra in eighth grade.
So, I would, I, I don't mean to get on my soapbox, I know you guys hear this from me all the time, right? Because this whole equity and access has been a big issue for me. So, when we're looking at a student who's being placed into algebra in ninth grade when a significant number of peers are being placed into algebra in seventh and eighth grade, that sends a strong message to that child as well. So, if you have a child that has not been exposed to academic rigor earlier in education because no one believed that they were capable of rising to the level of rigor, and now, we are pushing students off and going, oh, no, that one can't be successful until ninth grade. We obviously are not making that statement, but the message that the kids are receiving are, I can't be successful in algebra in middle school like a lot of my peers. And so, I think that is something that we have to consider in the process too and encouraging the right students who can be successful, absolutely, um, who may not be the poster child of middle school algebra opportunity, but with the right supports can be successful. I think that truly changes the trajectory going forward as well. I think the big key, and this is a conversation you and I have had and, and we have had in, in some workshops, is making sure the right supports are there to help those students be successful. But if we can get them successful in middle school in algebra, we can literally change their path through high school.
I, I, I agree and, um, unfortunately, our data suggests a lot of bias in placement. It does. And that's, you know, it's something that we have to own and move forward. And, um, it, and, and not biased because this whole puzzle says this student won't be successful and they're biased that doesn't make sense. When I look at students who are capable but don't graduate from high school, one of the things I do is I look at their entire trajectory. And far too often, I'm seeing students who were level threes, level fours, even level fives in middle school take the path of least resistance and get, and, you know, I, I can't say that it's causal, it's not scientific. We look at all of it. I look at every possible bit of information that we can and then working with our principals and schools and making those decisions. And far too often, the ones we say can't, they're not for the right reasons. And so, what we've asked schools to do is go back, look at and review. Several schools emailed me, we reviewed these fifteen, we still think it's the right choice, and I said, perfect. Leave those, right? That, that's not a problem. I just want another set of eyes over them to look at it for some of those, um, non-cognitive biases that we know happen.
Is there a, a different, um, standard in any way between, based on which year they take the test? I mean, if you take algebra as a seventh grader, is any change? I mean, is the first grade that comes back?
They have different honors and, and, uh, regular, their EOC impact is slightly different. But outside of that, they're taking the exact EOC and we have cleaned up what was a problem in years past of different books and if you, you know, and making sure that the kids that are being exposed to it are getting like the real content so they don't have a fake sense either. We don't want a false sense. Because it's an EOC class, that becomes the ultimate, um, leveller and the data is, again, extreme. Even for those same level threes, in both scenarios, they do better in eighth grade.
So, the only difference in the EOC is, you said, the impact is, it weighs differently into their, their final grades. But as far as when it's going to the state and coming back, no matter what grades it weighs.
That, it doesn't matter, it's one EOC test.
I don't know if this is the right time for this question, but what are these supports we're putting in place?
Yeah, good question.
Because we keep saying they'll be successful with the right support.
So, each school gets identified funds for academic support programs. Um, we've released those funds and they submit plans. We have given them recommendations on best practices. So, a lot of schools are doing three days a week morning tutoring, they're doing like organized, uh, retake programs. Um, we've developed a set of curriculum that are designed to target gap contents. And so, those are in our curriculum guides and so, the teacher determines... Because imagine, one of the challenges of secondary school is you're receiving kids from all over. And so, this may have been an awesome teacher, but really have gaps in statistics. This may have been an awesome teacher and had gaps in geometry. So, with our progress monitoring, the teacher's going to have that gap information earlier. We've created a set of lesson plans to target those gaps. And I'm assuming this scary mystery thing's going to come back.
And the progress, that's math, it's kind of like I read it first.
That's math.
Yes, yes.
Pam? They ask me too many questions. The computer can take it.
And do you feel like our math teachers are well-versed on this? They know what they're doing, they know what math is?
I think we are way closer. So, could I ever say that with certainty with any pool? I, I wouldn't, that would be foolishness. I can tell you, I visited, I think, nearly every single one last year personally, minus weird planning periods. This year, my fall classroom visits, um, the only classrooms I'm visiting are algebra classrooms. And so, in those classrooms, I'm talking to the teachers about the curriculum they're using, the support, how they're using their math. Um, I've done probably fifteen to twenty so far already. I've got the north area done, beachside, and working my way in the next two weeks. So, within three weeks, um, assuming the teacher wasn't absent, I'm speaking with every single algebra teacher to personally just hear how they're using the curriculum, what they need. Teacher, for example, said, I love the online curriculum, they're great, it gives support, but I'd like a hard copy. I said, okay, so I went back to my office and got her hard copy printed because for her, she would be more likely able to use the resources that way. So, I'm personally walking in their classrooms and talking to all of them. I just saw your students' classroom teacher the other day because I want to see the algebra teachers. And in lieu of it, I'm literally focusing on nothing else because I want them to know how serious we are about them having what they need. And, um, I pull them aside and I ask what they're using, how they're using the results, any problems they've had, do they need anything they don't have? I'm having those conversations with them.
Wonderful. Thank you for doing that. And what is our situation with math coaches? Do, how many do we have? Do we have them at the district, are they in schools? How many students?
So, I have one math resource teacher for all of seven twelve, um, and she is spread very, very thin. She is at a different school pretty much every single day, um, and really working closely with the schools. I think three of our secondary schools have their own math coach. And that is, uh, Palm Bay, um, Coco, and Madison. Based on their data, we have Space Coast that's actually able to fund their own instructional coach through their car, but it's not a lot. So, I have one person and they, there's a couple in the schools.
Palm Bay, Madison, and what else is there?
Coco.
Those are our only math coaches in the school? I thought Stone had one.
Um, Stone had one at one point in time where they converted one of their instructional units, but they don't, they converted it for that.
So, they do or they don't?
They don't. They did at one point in time, which is why I was saying that.
But Madison has one?
Madison has.
Why is there a choice for Madison to have one?
Because Madison was a DA school and... Because Madison was a DA school and our lowest performing middle school. I say that lovingly, but they're working. Okay, geometry, the, the, the geometry test typically follows a year later. We have increasing numbers of eighth graders taking geometry, but primarily ninth and tenth grade. I didn't disaggregate this one, I didn't think it was eliciting as exciting of a conversation as Algebra. But again, we're looking at the what? What are they struggling with, what is the content that's difficult? And just one more reminder, the teacher does, can see this exactly like I see it. So, moving on to science, if we're okay with science. Science is represented by fifth and eighth grade, biology is not in here because it's in the EOC score. And this is identifying our patterns there in the areas we struggle. We went really quickly to Earth and space science, because we really wanted to make sure we did well there for where we live. And honestly, we're not thrilled, so we're gonna be working on that a little bit more. Because our eye went to that really quickly. Since fifth and eighth grade are so disparate, we went ahead and separated those scores out for you as well. Given that it's pretty di- big distance in content, and I have to tell you, this is the power of data. Until we made a choice to do this for this presentation, I always thought elementary was the weak link and I came to find out secondary was. So, again, the more you dig into data, the more you can make sure your solutions are targeted at the right work. And although elementary had more level ones than secondary did, we struggled in excellence. So this tells an interesting pattern, right? So they may have struggled a little bit more in, in the level one area, but our students are not excelling as well as we hoped to in secondary. So again, it gives us information, are we giving them challenging content? Are we really making sure they're getting the information at the level of which they should? And then if you go on to this next graph, this is taking it to you by the standard, the substandard by grade level as well, to see, literally, if we aggregate data all the time, we can't see the individual patterns. And so again, you can see physical science, our, our eighth grade students are performing better than our fifth grade students, but you can see some of the patterns in the actual content and helps us identify those gaps.
So if I could just share with the fellow board members, and I don't wanna go out too far off topic here, you might recall a recent board meeting where I was asking a speaker about, so what standards have you identified that you need to be working on? Our team clearly knows, for example, that functions are an issue, that geometry is an issue, and that's how we do the hard work to make students more successful. And that's what I was digging out with that question.
To be fair, that was a pretty little bar, you just write, you know, compare and contrast. Onto biology, bio, this was an interesting year for biology. So if you recall, a couple of board workshops ago, which actually predates our two newest board members, one of the changes we made in the RAR public schools was to add flexibility, flexibility to science sequencing, where we previously had integrated one, two, and three, biochem physics as the only acceptable options. So this past year represented the convergence of all those things, where we had ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders taking Biology EOC, because some of them were finishing up that integrated sequence, some were in the new sequence of physical science bio and some were our traditional freshman bio. So this is a tough year for us to really get a handle on it because of the various different levels of kids and we overtested some of our students that typically struggle with science. We tested both grade levels in last year. But of course, we're still watching that with precision, especially when our eighth grade science tells us that life science is our lowest set of standards for eighth grade, and then they turn around and take Biology. So that gives me a little heartache and we're working on that as well. All right, I got a happy spot coming. This is happy.
Hi, there.
This is so great. All right, let's forget that it's great.
I know Dr. Mullins, they're path up first because that's what he teaches, but civics is the best.
Let me tell you what's so great about civics is never in my career have I seen a pattern like this, that our largest cluster of students are level fives. And that is remarkable diligent work, especially when you consider, it is in large part in ELA assessment too, right? So they're looking at documents, they're reading, and so we are literally trying to capture those same strategies and skills into our other classrooms, our resource teachers are working together to translate that.
Can you say this, is there a way to show this data to the state legislature? Who has a huge focus on civics.
They keep acting like we don't have civics, like we do, we test it, like it's great. And the fact that the majority, the biggest cluster of students are level fives is remarkable.
And these are our seventh graders who are getting in trouble all the time.
They are, exactly, but you look, they're there every day. They're there all the time.
They know their roles, rights, and responsibilities.
Right, what I thought was particularly cool is where their academic strengths lie. And their academic strength lies on the standards being tested around roles, rights, and responsibilities of citizens, which I think makes us all feel happy in that. And these are seventh graders, an average mix of students throughout the whole county, and they're not like only the smart ones in seventh grade, we test everybody in seventh grade.
And you hear all the time, they don't teach social studies in elementary.
We do a pretty good job in seventh grade, making up for that.
And we did, we did, Paul.
Yes.
We did teach it so well.
The Campbell family contributed to that.
I'm so glad to hear that. But I just wanna stare at it again, because I've never seen anything like it in my career, that the highest group is five.
I don't wanna burst a bubble, but I know.
Oh, by the way.
Whoa, 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 no, this is civics, this is, this is my social studies, I'm just, I'm a high class buyer.
Change the slide. I, I, I do have a question. And maybe you'll be able to just say I'm wrong and then we can continue to be happy. But I just, I reflect back to when Brady got a five on the civics EOC and I did a little dance at my house being so proud. And then when I really looked at what he knew, he got a five because everyone else in the state was so terrible, is what it looked like when I looked at it, like he didn't master.
Well, it's criterion reference though, it's not norm reference though, his score is not relative to others.
That's what I wanna say.
It's a criterion reference assessment.
So these kids know civics that are a five, it's not that they did better than some really bad kids in another county?
Correct, it's not norm reference, it's a criterion reference assessment. I mean, them knowing it, like, I'm not like writing a check on that, I'm just saying it is a criterion reference assessment, so they are not, their score is absolute to the standards.
Well, and I can see where the confusion over the organization and function of government is with our current status with our government.
I mean, that being said, we're not like resting our laurels, like, we are still really working hard on curriculum. I think where we have had success is there's a lot less aversion to like what we've identified as strong curriculum. And that's one factor that we've seen. The next factor, which is also pretty cool news, is our US history results. And I can tell you, as a principal, I distinctly recall when these came out and we just thought this was gonna be the scourge of mankind, because there's not a lot of incentive to do well. It's not a EOC, I mean, it's not a graduation requirement, the kids are older. But overall, our scores were still quite strong, we still have work to do, we're not resting. But we see some pretty good patterns in there, again, especially since much of this mimics an ELA assessment. They're reading primary documents, they're reading passages, they're answering questions. So we're again trying to have those two divisions work closely together.
Ms. Sullivan, is it safe to say that our social studies department seems to be exceedingly better than the math department and science department in our school district?
I am actually not taking that, even though I was a social studies teacher. No, I, I think that we have some natural strengths, so parents enjoy, like, if all of those things come together, we have some natural strengths. I'd love to see our, our science mimic those natural strengths. I'd like to see our advanced math mimic those natural strengths. But some kids just like different content, they're, they're might be more receptive, they don't, they don't realize it's really a reading task too, and they're engaging with it differently.
Or it could be we have good social studies teachers.
We have great teachers.
And we have, but also in the last year had a discussion about aligned instructional.
Aligned instruction, we have really aligned instruction. That's true. I, I would say that teachers are equally committed. We, we've got good instruction, we've got good materials, we have really good support resources. And so I'm gonna be quiet. Yeah, you just mess with us.
So I'm gonna go into one of mine and Steph's favorite slides is the report card. And we've shown this to you many times, but this is powerful. And I know we work with our principals so that they can navigate this without any trouble. And they've done their own analysis of their school, they are able to go on it live as the S of subgroups are in there. And, you know, what made that so wonderful, that was, that was already our focus, was subgroups, because we have to meet every child's needs. So we were already on the path of subgroups before this came about. So this just codifies our work and shows that we really have great data. And if you play on this, I mean, I wish we had time to go through it all, because there's so much in there that, you know, the teacher.
Quality.
Quality is in there, discipline, it is all on that link. So spend some time in there, it is fabulous.
I actually emailed Chancellor Oliva and told him how much I appreciated this resource, because it was one of the first times I've seen something from this, not the first time. It's one of the better times I've seen something from the state that actually is a useful tool for schools and allowed comparisons that we weren't already doing, so.
And isn't this where you guys were when you did the secondary workshop with all the principals and principals?
Yes, yes.
You could break down to higher African American students or higher yellow students.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
All the sufferers.
Yeah, and you're gonna see a little bit more of that.
So this is where we've taken some of that and just break it down. So if you look at our ELA achievement, as far as the two years, provide versus the state, we're doing well, but we still have the gap, because only sixty-one percent. So there's still students missing, but who are those students? And that's the power of the subgroup data, so Steph. Here's where we're not doing well, here's.
But we're, we're showing improvement in every category.
We're showing improvement, but we still have gap. And this is where that, and Ms. Yee alluded to it, that opportunity myth. You know, we, we have students that just because of their subgroup, we feel that they can't take Algebra or they shouldn't be tested for gifted, or they should, because of their ethnicity, their pop, uh, their frame reduced rate. So we have work to do, and so as we dig deep into this and we look at it by grade level, we are doing so much better than we were with Hispanic, but we still have work to do.
I'm gonna keep it real, so this, this keeps me up at night. Our African American students should not be getting a better education somewhere else than in the RAR public schools. And although we are going in the right direction, the work is going, the improvement is there, we are tackling some issues in our county in how we serve our African American students. Because we are above the state in everything. And so when we see this, this keeps us on the relentless pursuit that we're on. The good news is, it's work we've been now doing on year three, the data is showing we're making progress on it. But we've had tough conversations with our schools, we've been super transparent about it. Ms. Campbell mentioned my clarity, I'm not vague about goals and means for kids. But despite the fact that we can feel really proud about the work we've done, we're not, we're not settling.
And again, our, our students with disabilities, and Stephanie brought this up earlier, that our students with disability are not seeing, in some cases, grade level standard material.
In lots of places.
In lots of places, I was trying to be nice.
I just kept it real.
I'm nice, remember our elementary? So our students with disability are not seeing grade level material. They're not being exposed, but they're assessed on it, so we have to change that. We have to put the most complex material in front of the student and then we have to pull them for support and enrichment and small groups. But our students with disability, again, we're outperforming the state, but the numbers are horrible. Those are students that aren't getting what they need from us, so we have to really, really work on that, and we are.
It is, but a big improvement, we wanna recognize that, yeah.
It is a big improvement, but we are, and we work with Student Services, because we all have that same vision and mission of getting the quality materials in front of students. And we look at our service delivery plan and continuing those services, and it's a constant conversation we have with our friends in Student Service, how are we willing to improve this?
I would say a lot of it too is mindset. So the vast majority of our students with disabilities are specific learning disabled students. And by definition, that is telling you that the student is capable, because our, their achievement data is at a certain level. There is a specific thing that's keeping them from reaching their own achievement level. And it's our job to really narrow that gap for them in that specific area. So a lot of it's mind, it's just shifting your thinking, because these are students that we know from their data that their achievement levels make them comparable with their non-disabled classmates. We have to narrow in and be really diligent in our strategy work and our individual education plans and our MTSS processes to keep trying new things. So when we hear it takes too long, we wanna say it takes too long for what? We wanna find that strategy that is working to elevate the child. And we don't always get it right the first time. It takes some diligent back and forth work to try to figure out how we can help that child with their particular area of need. It's not easy, but where.
Do we do like psychoeducation analysis, like, do we have our psychiatry psychologists? Do they do something, I might not be using the right terminology, but the assessments, I've seen them done outside of the district, where they, I mean, they seem to narrow it down, I've seen it done to, they learn this way, this is where their strength is, this is what you need to double down, do we do that internally?
We do.
Are we able to, with the needs, are we able to actually get that done?
We, we do, I, I would suggest the gap is not on that end. The gap is on like daily expectations and strategies in the least restrictive environment. And the commitment to the RTI process, where you're working on interventions, you are tracking the success of those interventions and your regrouping. Now, that all being said, time is time is time. And so it's certainly difficult with guidance counselor levels and time that it takes outside of the classroom. So when our teachers are instructing all day, that time is tough. So I believe the, and I'm assuming my, my Student Services friends agree, I, I believe the, the solution is in the day-to-day work at the school, but the reality of the time and effort around that and manpower around it to really get special results. And I wanna get special results. And so we are trying to create as much to scale as we can, but it relies what we know that these are individual challenges.
Well, you almost have to really, you have to reach out to the, I know you are, reach out to the teachers.
Oh, yeah, they're great, they're a huge part, yes.
Their expectation of, or what they perceive as a limitation.
That's right back to that, yeah.
Absolutely, and it's not, you know, I experienced this myself with several teachers when I was in the classroom. And one of the ways that you can be very helpful for the economically disadvantaged and the student with disabilities is, I was saying at my horse, my soapbox, is unique elem, unique elementary social workers. That would be, and of course, I know it's all about funding, but that's another resource that really can target and help in a different way than classroom teachers.
I, I think some of the challenges we face is the understanding of resources and support versus staffing to remove from our environment, right? So we're, we're, you guys hear it, I'm sure, all the time, and that's why I say it takes too long for what, right? To me, it's frustrating how long it takes to just figure it out for that child to succeed in this environment, not it takes too long for this child to be removed from our environment. And we're, we're, we're getting there, we're, we're in a mindset shift, but we're getting there. Teachers want to do right by their children. And even the one that's frustrated, maybe their response isn't where we want it to be, it's coming from the right source. And so we have to keep connecting with our classroom teachers, connecting with our school administrators, the entire team in Chris's office, the entire teams in our office is just continuing on that quest together.
It goes the same with our economically disadvantaged, we're outperforming. We're outperforming the state, but again, it's that mindset of the, are these children capable? And they are. And so, it, it takes the time to build a relationship with the child and the family to overcome the obstacles that we don't even understand they may be facing every day. And we have to, as teachers, we have to know what that child is coming from. Are they on a couch or are they on the floor? Are they in a tent? What can we do? What kind of resources do we have? Uh, the resources we have with our, our students in transition, our students, um, um, that are in severe poverty, you know, it's the clothing, it's the food banks. It's, it's all those things. And if we don't take time to know our students and where they come from, then this will continue to be a bridge that we have to find. Um, we are growing, but we're still not where we need to be. Steph, can I move into math?
Yeah, we're gonna go into math and I'll be a little quicker because the information is there for you. Um, but again, you can see, I, I, I do wanna emphasize over this past year, we have increased everywhere we have put effort. So, I think that's worth noting, um, and worth celebrating because I tend to default to the other kids we didn't get. Um, but I think it's worth noting and celebrating that every one of these target areas, we showed improvement, every single one. And so, I, I do wanna underscore that when we get passionate about the students that we miss. Um, again, you can see, you, you see a trend now, right? And so, my pain is not your pain and our pain is together. We're gonna keep on working on that. Again, improvement, but the state should not be outperforming us here. And that's why you hear from us all the time about equity. We push back on equity. We talk about, uh, non-cognitive reasons replacing students in courses. All of those things are anchored in what the data is telling us. And again, math, even though we should, an improvement, we're even behind in our Hispanic population and this district in general does very well in closing the gap between Hispanic. And so, math, again, still an area of focus for us and something we'll be relentless on.
So, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So, I'm assuming that you can drill down by school.
Oh, yeah.
And so, when you drill down by school, then this information would be very valuable because that, then you can go out and look at, this is the group that I want to support.
And we, we've done it exhaustively with our school administrators. What is really nice, uh, Ms. Klein is gonna mention soon. When we adopted the state school improvement plan this year, which previously we had our own version, but the state one is anchored in the same concept and drops all the data in for them. So, it forces them to look at this same data that came from report card drops into theirs. And the questions force them to say, which subgroup did not perform in this? The tablet forces this level of reflection. Now, I don't think that was necessarily necessary, but that's super complimentary. Like, when we're not all saying the same thing. I believe our schools care about these patterns anyway. But now, they're not doing a school improvement plan that is unrelated. Their school improvement plan is tied into these same options and we love it. Um, again, with students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged, tiny, tiny little growth here, not much that we'd like to see, but again, some strong work. Um, a lot of our schools have really, uh, worked well with Student Services on increasing that least restricted environment. And I think that is paying off in dividends on the improvement we're seeing and that we hope to capitalize that as years go on. So, this is what Ms. Campbell was referencing and this is what's cool about that data. So, we are allowed to, in that report card, you know, you've seen district grade, so you know we're an A. We are an A grade. We know all of the categories that were a grade. Well, for the first time, there's a tool to say, okay, what would be our school grade on all eleven school grade indicators come out to be if we were a district of these subgroups? And so, uh, Ms. Campbell, you were there when I did this one with my principals. This data wasn't out yet. And so, I'll let you guys take a look at what our district grade is for those subgroups.
We don't have this by state, do we? To compare the states. And the other districts on this thing.
Are there states?
The state average, like.
Our state average, okay. I can, I can add that and send it to you guys.
Not, no.
I can match state by state.
No, 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 for Florida, like we've looked at everything else where we are. I'm wondering, is, you know, by, is the state average a C or is the state average an A?
I can do that for you. Yeah, that's easy, that's no problem. So, what you'll see is improvements in every single subgroup. You see improvements, you see our targeted work, in my opinion, is paying off. Remember, this is eleven factors. So, this is all three ELA, all three math. This is social studies, science, middle school acceleration, graduate and college included rate. And if you go on, you'll see what we have, what we stand by. This is our goal. Until we are an A for every subgroup. Until every student in our school is served by an A district. We are relentless. And some may call it obnoxious. Bossy, pushy, whatever.
Unapologetic.
Unapologetic.
But in a better way.
We, so, we have a lot to celebrate. Our students are outperforming in a lot of areas, but our goal is not the aggregate being an A. Our goal is an A for all students. And how are we gonna get there? Jane Klein?
This is how we're gonna get there. So, you've heard us say priority schools, watch schools, monitoring schools.
Oh.
All the schools.
Can I reference before you go on? I was supposed to do this slide, sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry. So, something new this year, um, that we have been working on with entire cabinet is we are working to create a district-wide commitment to our priority schools. And to where we have a clear plan on if you're deemed a priority school, this is what you get, this is your responsibilities, this is how we work. So, I'm currently in the middle of the cabinet members all working with their teams and bringing back how every division in this organization is working to the good of our priority schools. And not informally by luck, but formally in writing. And we're really excited about it. I've gotten some great feedback from the different divisions. A couple more still have to get their teams together. We're putting that all together in a clear district-wide plan for our priority schools where every group in this organization is committed to their well-being. Um, so today, we're just gonna show you the Learn, Leading and Learning slice. But hopefully, we usually do an update in December as well. We plan to roll out the full written plan along with what we've done so far. Um, but for today, we're just gonna show you the L and L slice.
So, I wanted to just insert context. The work you're gonna see here is in response to our conversation during evaluation time of building a performance management culture for our district and how we use data, how it drives the decisions that we make and how we continue on our pursuit of excellence. And, uh, you, you requested, how do we monitor our stu, our schools? How do we know which ones are at risk and in jeopardy? That's what you're gonna hear here today, along with actions that, that, uh, extend well beyond leading and learning owning that responsibility because it's really the whole district's.
I might give you a great example if I could embarrass our E T folks over there a little bit. So, um, Sheri Bowman works on a South Area Project Team that works closely with the N double A C P on improving, uh, educational outcomes for our students. Um, she reached out to Educational Technology. Um, one of his staff members went and presented at night to the Baptist missionary.
Macedonia Mission.
Thank you, to the parents at the church to teach them how to utilize focus to monitor their students and to be engaged. And so, and that was an evening activity that had nothing to do with the general job descriptions, but reflects their commitment to priority schools and priority communities. Those are the kind of responses we're hearing from the different cabinet members. Some like that, they've already started because we've been working in a priority school framework. Some we are formalizing to make everybody committed to it.
Okay. All right, so, the first thing we're gonna remind you of is this. And you saw that in your superintendent's update this weekend. So, Janet Stevenson, um, Janet is, she's just phenomenal in her work. But she oversees, um, the school improvement process for our district. And if you were able to link into this, you saw her videos and she's pulled some stuff from the D O E, how to walk through the process. It gives them, so this is their own website. One of the other thing that, um, and as Steph said earlier, it all ties to ESSA. It all ties to the way of our work and, because it has to start with a clear school improvement plan. Schools have to know what their needs are and they have to know what their focus is. And it can't be all over the place. It has to be a focus, but we can't do everything in a year, even though Steph and I are trying everything. Um, but one of the things that you will want to know is when, uh, our plans are finished, they'll be on here too as a hot link. So, you'll be able to reference this webpage at any time if you wanna look at the school's school improvement.
And you'll notice that all school improvement plans come before you for, uh, information on November nineteenth.
Yep.
And then for approval, the following.
All right, so what are we doing? What are elementary, what's going on with elementary and our priority schools? So, I wanted to first start out, this is our most priority, our watch list. These are our schools that, as you can see, um, their points earned and where we need to work. But this only comes from one data point. This is FSA data. So, we have to look at lots of different things. So, this is our list of our most priority. And you can see, you know, um, yeah, once again, our little Endeavor gained seventy points last year. So, they are not our lowest performing school. We don't want any school lowest performing, but you know, that's, that's a huge celebration. Right, Steph?
But they don't, they don't come off the watch list.
No, right, no, no, no.
You're gonna keep them on that positive trajectory.
No. And so, Pompei Elementary is another example. So, they were double Ds. And so, they, they still have to be supported, they have to be monitored. So, these are all of the schools out of the fifty-six that we're monitoring. So, what are we gonna do about it? So, um, once a month, all of the content specialists and resource teachers from elementary come together and we look at our data and we look at what our plans are, who's been in what school, where the needs are. So, our ELA, L, ELA support plan is writing because we have to do some writing across the curriculum. We have to start writing in kindergarten and we have to have a plan to use the aligned material that we have provided and we have created. Our other area is we don't have quality, um, small group instruction. So, how do we meet the needs of all children? Because the, when that child is in front of me as a teacher, it has to be the most difficult time. I mean, I have to be able to support them in small group instruction. We know that we have fluency in phonics and vocabulary concern. So, how are we teaching? How are we using the ATUs and the L D C model, modules?
Hold on, remind our board and those watching, A T U and L D C.
Thank you.
It was on my.
After text unit and literacy design collaborative.
This is something that our resource teachers did. They took the text because our adopted text journeys was not as complex as it needed to be. So, we took the story and made it more complex with our own written work. So, here are our, um, support people. So, Trish Ely, Trish Ely, right here. She's K twelve media. But do you see what our elementary focus is? We had a great celebration this last, um, last Friday. We came together as a group. Each time they come together, they have to tell us what their impact was. What's been your impact on the school? Because that's the thing, impact. So, what's your impact? Trish says, I was able to get, allow, to give a school, a media specialist to allow kindergarten and first graders to check out books.
Hollow.
Wild, white.
Goodness gracious.
So, I mean, you think that, you know, because they're afraid that they're gonna lose a book. Lose a book.
Right.
Read a book. So, Christine Allinger, Christine Allinger is our only social studies resource teacher for elementary. She works great with Kim Garten in secondary, but she also, as Debbie said, social studies is ELA. So, what are you doing to support ELA? So, you'll see the schools that they're, they're working with. So, you, so, um, you know, Debbie Wood, those are her schools. Um, Anne Skinner, who wants to be everywhere. She's, this is Anne's block and this is Anne's block, but Anne does it and she's amazing. But you can see our K two resource teachers and all the different schools there. All right, Steph. Same, uh, foundation with math. We know math is a struggle and also we have this year where we didn't adopt a textbook anymore. A lot of schools are using Eureka, the majority of our schools are using Eureka, but other schools are, are using, um, the other text. So, what are we doing to support Eureka? Because if we're using Eureka with fidelity, we're beginning the algebraic thinking in kindergarten.
Right.
So, here are the, uh, action steps that our, um, math resource teachers are using to support, um, schools. Now, we have a few Title One schools that have their own math coach, but what we found is we need to make certain that they have the math skills to then coach because I might be able to teach math, but might not be able to coach math. So, we're making a math coach pool so that they have to go through this rigor of being in that pool before they're selected. Again, there is our little dynamic, um, team of three. Um, two Title One, Rita and Thammy Davis are Title One and Diane Gard. Here are the schools that they're focused on. You see Liz and Priscilla, they are the same two that you saw in ELA. So, they, um, these two are our primary resource teachers. So, they do both ELA and math.
Can I have you, can I have you pause for just a moment? Because I have to draw attention to, we, we hear a lot about our instructional, our resource teachers and how many we have and, and I think you see now, they, it is a, it's a small team, but the impact that they have committed to having on our schools, it's very targeted, it's very intentional, it's very focused.
So, as I said earlier, we have to figure out what we're looking for. So, we have the FSA data, we have our I ready data, thank you. And, but there's still more to that. We didn't actually see what's going on in the classroom. So, we came up with instructional reviews. We don't have the state in there now walking, so we have to take that on as our own. One of the, uh, things that I said has to be a non-negotiable is our directors and our principals, you get your own internal bias with your school. Well, Steph's had a bad day. She wasn't her best teacher. And now, and today it's still not her best teacher teaching and tomorrow it's still not. But, you know, we love Steph, so we make that, um, excuse. So, we have to, Janet Stevenson, our school improvement person, is leading this charge. And then, all the directors are participating in at least, um, two to three instructional reviews. So, the first thing happens is our principals have to prepare a state of their school and have to share that. So, our resource teachers are going out as well if they're available because they're assigned to that school, they gotta see what's going on in the classroom. They have to describe what they're doing in their school improvement, what their plan is, their, their, what, any obstacles that they may be facing. Um, and then what they want us to look for. They have to create teams and thanks to Chris and her team, she's had someone supporting every one of our walkthroughs. So, getting the lens from our Student Services side, seeing where our gaps are. And then, any different, any changes in your school that you need to share with us. So, this next is a sample of our instructional reviews. So, as you can see, we're here. So, they're still, oh, they just finished at University Park. So, today, there were two, Pompei Elementary, University Park. We've already conducted Creel and Sable, MIM, Endeavor, Saturn. And you can see if we did Creel in the morning, the next Creel one will be the afternoon. So, we can see both ends of the, of the school day. We're looking for what the principal wants us to look for. We're walking as many classrooms as we're, as possible. We're collecting as much data on is it standard aligned material? Are students engaged? Are they, are the tech, are the tasks in front of them aligned and are they complex? What's the thinking? Are they able to teach Eureka math? What other modeling do we need to do? So, that's a sample of the instructional reviews. So that's a sample of the instructional reviews and they're going on throughout the year. And then I wanted you just to see the quality of samples of our websites. So there, I just picked the three top ones, ELA, um, math and science. There's also a gifted one.
Social studies is also top.
Social studies is also top, that's right. There's a, but they have a link in every bit of the instructional material. This is for teachers, is there. All other resources are there. The other piece I want to quickly share with you is, I think, and Dr. Mullins said it, it's like, you know, where, um, this is just a sample. So this is, um, what school were you in today? Uh, what your name is and then what subject area. This is only a piece of the spreadsheet that they're keeping track in. Stephanie's team does the same thing. So we know where they've been, how much time they're in there, uh, what their focus is on. The other piece that we're working on is a principal focused document. So principals have a lot on their plate. Yeah, that, all the different documents. So what can we do to help guide principals? We're still on draft, we're gonna share a little bit with principals tomorrow at our pack meeting. But, "Impact Practices for the next month," focus on this. Develop a schedule for walkthroughs and create look fours to monitor for standard aligned student tasks. That's every principal. It's not just our priority, it's every principal. Create an I-Ready data chart, schedule and the protocols. Conduct individual grade level data chart, chats. Evaluate progress to your SIP goal and key data points that are being tracked to measure your outcome. So these are the kinds of activities and look fours we want principals when they're walking through their building. Another thing we're making is hot links. So I'm walking in kindergarten and I'm walking into Eureka lesson. What should be going on? I can have my computer, I have the hot link, I can hit it, it'll tell me what module they should be on, what lesson they should be on and what I should be seeing. So we're helped trying to guide that with our principals. The other piece that we're trying is, you know, we're very fortunate in elementary to have instructional coaches in every school. But we want to make sure our return on investment is what you want us to have. So we're creating a coach's calendar where the principal writes based on their school improvement plan and based what they see. These are, um, teachers I need you to model with. These are teachers I need you to coach. These are lessons. So they have a open dialogue conversation and then the, uh, coach can put their comments in. And so we have that monitoring of what instructions should be looking, look like and what, um, and, and how we're held accountable for.
Alright, so the land of secondary schools.
Oh, they don't do anything.
Such a troublemaker. Um, so I'm gonna hit it from a slightly different angle. We do a lot of common practices, so I'm just trying to point out some of the things that, um, maybe we haven't talked about already. So our priority schools are clustered primarily in our high poverty area. Um, McNair is kind of on the bubble, um, because they, you know, waffle from an A to B to a C and back and forth. Um, this year, we're formally including them in the process to make sure they get all the support they need as well, especially since all cabinet are supporting these schools. Some of the things that we have to be clear about is really understanding what is leading to generational struggles in the school. Years of, of struggle. So significant populations of underserved kids, economic challenges, communities with experience in segregation. Each one of these communities are rooted in areas where her parents and grandparents segregation was a real part of their life. And in some of the communities, there's still tension around that. And none of us want to recognize that because it's not our reality, but the fact is there's tension points around it. Under-resourced and my new favorite term that I made up is under-scheduling. The idea of not putting students in an environment where they can succeed and not allowing them to have access. Um, you've heard it from me before and I, I think Dr. Mullins has coined, um, we talk about readiness for, access to and success in rigorous content. And that rigorous content could be career and technical education content. The fact of the matter is we want students in productive trouble, we want students grappling, grappling with interesting content. And expectations for student achievement is playing a role. And it's something we're working on. So when we think about our schools where our students have challenges, I, I come from one of those schools, you guys know that. Our students have a lot of challenges. You, you sometimes run to the impasse of trying to lessen the burden. So if a student has a lot of burdens, have a lot of challenges, we try to lessen the burden. What I suggest is that we strengthen the child. And it's a different mindset. Um, sometimes our very best teachers are so incredibly kind. And this is where we see things like racial anxiety and different biases that in fear of being contrary, they lower the expectation. Or they lower the expectation with a deep understanding of the challenge that the child faces. We want to understand the challenge that the child faces, but we want to strengthen the child. We want to strengthen the child in overcoming some of those difficulties. And how do we do that collective advocacy is number one. I believe that me, my team, our schools and our teachers are good enough to do that. I believe that working together, we can beat the predictors of data. That we can produce results that defy what demographics should tell us that students should achieve. So collective efficacy is really important. Quality instructional materials for all of our students, engaging educational experiences, that's really what it works. Far too often, you'll pop into a class maybe of struggling students that are doing less work where in that classroom, they should really be capitalizing on every moment of instructional time. So really trying to connect a vibrancy in a classroom of our struggling students is equivalent to what you see in a great debate in an advanced placement classroom. There's some exciting engagement there. So those are things we're working on. Um, the, the basic work, I just kind of wanted to sum up our leading and learning. I use a risk ratio for program funding. We've been doing this for about four years now. We're, we did a multi-metric, uh, data infusion to identify ratios. And so for example, um, art materials. Students in an art class are charged a ten dollar fee. As you can imagine, students in some of our schools don't pay that fee. And it becomes cyclical because that program has less money to resource the classroom. We now give them more of a resource to counteract some of that. Um, our directors do really the bulk of the work. So I have to give my directors all the credit in the world. Um, they're monitoring academic growth via the school improvement plan and fidelity to curriculum. For example, a lot of our resources are online. We can track, is there schools that aren't even getting their kids online? They're not giving them the materials. Um, expenditures as a whole, we try to make sure that they're balanced and appropriate. Um, how they schedule their students, extensive classroom walkthroughs and teacher feedback. And, and some of the things that's different now is our directors are also reviewing the teacher feedback from the principals to make sure that the principals are really, and the assistant principals are giving good feedback. So we're keeping an eye on that as well. And, um, same with our resource teachers, we track their whereabouts. I have a lean and mean group, um, so one math, one English, one science. So we're pretty careful with them and how we utilize them. And as much as possible, some task relief. If we know that we are task heavy on something that's non-academic, we'll try to provide some task relief so the principal can be in the classroom. And so my division might do a form for them that we're asking the principals to do. For those priority principals, we might just do it for them, just so that they can have some task relief. Um, we also give them increased academic support funding for supplemental instruction. Um, we're able to award some grants and additional funding opportunities through, uh, our funds, Title Two and Title Four, to make sure we're providing extra help in there. And priority accesses to any conferences and training for the staff at the school as well as for the leaders at the school. And that kind of sums it up. Um, and so one last tangential topic that we wanted to present to you since we were in front of you today, um, that there, we're in state board rule fever. Meaning, um, we just got all the state statutory changes and now we're getting monthly state board rule changes that impact this school year. And so this one is particularly relevant to a lot of the passions in the room, so we wanted to share. Um, just recently, the state board passed a rule that school districts must annually provide five hours of instruction to students in six through twelve related to youth mental health awareness. And this is over ten topics and standards. So this is direct instruction, five hours out of the school day for every single student, six through twelve. So, um, we've got a report on that by December one and this becomes a natural part of our process. So what we did is we were smart enough to bring a team together, um, because we knew that this was difficult. All of a sudden, maybe a math teacher has to teach something on mental health for that school to meet the requirement. Um, Dr. Jana Jenkins, uh, director in student services is leading this team. That involves, uh, several members from leading and learning as well as, uh, a lot of the student services, as you can imagine. And we also invited Vanessa Skipper from the BFT since we're gonna have to be co-opting instructional time from teachers. And, uh, we are working on a plan that meets the rules. They've, uh, had three or four project team meetings already. Um, Ms. Whitebauer's not for me, so I was looking to her for her nods there. And where we've landed is, um, we've got a series of videos, questions and information. We're working with a couple other districts in collaboration. Um, we will then provide the set of content to the principal. The principal will then have to identify how they're doing in their school. And we're giving a little flexibility there because some schools have homeroom. So they might naturally fold it into homeroom, whereas other schools might have to take first period this month, second period that month. But we're gonna be on track for about two discrete lessons a month by the time this is ready to go. And they are sensitive topics, as you can imagine, around, um, suicide prevention, but other key areas. And we're gonna be as transparent as possible once we're ready, but we should be ready relatively soon-ish. I'm seeing from our student services, December first. We will be ready before December first. Um, but, uh, we're gonna roll it out to the principals. I think your principal's got a brief preview already.
Brief.
Mine on October first. And we've tried to consider the stressors of the principal, the teachers and the nature of the language. And, uh, we're finalizing that and I'm sure we'll be happy to share it with you once they're ready.
So five hours, is it five hour, what is that five hour?
Oh, so glad you asked. So we have asked every.
A week, a month, a year.
We've asked every version of that question because it is indeed five hours. Because as you know, our class periods are like forty-seven minutes. But no, it has to be an hour, around ten topics. And so.
A year, so if.
A year.
Okay.
So every student will receive that minimum of five hours. So some of it is gonna depend on the content. So what the approach we took was instead of providing a prescription, let's look at the content first. And let's say this content could easily be done in a video with questions by a giant teacher. This content's tough. I want to make sure that there's a guidance counselor available and things like that. But again, it has to be every grade level every year. So we're, we're crafting a six-year span of this content on a rule we've known about for a few weeks now and, uh, trying to get it right. And so we've got some really good minds in the room, um, some really good expertise, but we're just not there yet. Since we had this workshop, we decided to just get it on your radar that this was in the works since you might hear about this state board rule and wonder what we were doing with it. Um, on top of this state board rule, there's a couple other rules that have passed subsequent ones. One around sex trafficking and the other one around.
Drug and alcohol.
Drug and alcohol that are also mandatory content instructed in the schools. Um, those don't have an hour attached to them, but we have to validate how we're doing. They're trying to look at, can we pull this all in? Um, but this is lot, this like literally.
Right.
That last one was like a week old and they apply to this school year. So they're making decisions that impact this year's curriculum offerings and we're just trying to keep up with it.
And that's one of the reasons you haven't received the student progression plan yet. Because as of last.
Changing with great regularity.
At that party, we got a new one that has to be added to it, so.
So yeah. The plan has to be in by December first and then the five hours need to be completed by the end of the school year.
Correct, and becoming a natural part of the school system. Um, the state is creating a new system where we have to certify on mandatory content. So we will have to certify the plan on here. Right now, the plan says you have to identify which course. Well, in secondary schools, if you're gonna do it through first period, that's like five hundred different possible courses. And we've asked them, can we just say first period? And they've said no, so we're probably gonna give them a packet about this fact. Um, but separate from all these new state board rules, all of our other poor feral curriculum, I mean mandatory curriculum, um, we now have to report back on how those are being done and that was as of a memo Friday. Um, so we are in a constant revolving door on that. The good news is we have great people and they're doing great work, so that's the good news. Um, finally, just some of the things we referenced, we thought it would be handy for you to have links on one spot if you feel like going down that road to see either of our curriculum plans or anything like that. And we're done, we said we'd be ninety minutes.
Yay.
Great job.
Okay, nice.
Great job, thank you.
Absolutely.
Well done.
Any questions?
I think we asked him along the way mostly. I do, um, I leaned over to him at one point and I asked him and he said he agreed. And it's his school, that's why I'm gonna ask, I don't know if he realized you were wrapping up. But on your secondary watch schools, what came to my mind when I saw the list was, shouldn't O'Gally be in there?
We are, we, they are, are informal. Um, we are monitoring the Johnson and O'Gally, they're both B schools at this point. And so they may have made substantial gains, we're watching them closely, both Johnson and O'Gally. The other cluster is the southwest area. And so they have barely jockeyed, they're a B, but they've just jockeyed out of a B, out of a C, so we're watching them as well. So like our resource teachers know, for example, I want you at these six schools plus these are okay too. You know, that we count those.
Such a varied population.
Yes.
It's just that's, so some of that gets averaged out.
We, we absolutely agree that they're super vulnerable for like increases and decreases and we're watching them really closely.
Okay, thank you ladies, both of you, that was really very informative. And we appreciate your hard work and your dedication to all. Okay, hold on, Ms. Reed.
Every student matters.
And I have to go.
Same, Tom.
Let's move on to our legislative priorities, which will be facilitated by Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations.
Thank you very much. Um, so this is our first opportunity to discuss legislative priorities in the sunshine, although I've collected ideas from you all individually and shared them back, so you have a sense of, uh, what we're working on. For the, for those, I'm, for those who, um, are, are new to this, I just want to very quickly kind of describe our two-pronged approach to legislative advocacy, especially on state issues. Um, the first one is that our school board and superintendent belong to associations that have developed legislative platforms and very often those are on broad statewide issues. For example, the FSBA will be pushing this year on safe schools, the substitute teaching issue that we brought back again for the second or third year. Um, and, uh, some issues related to operating millages and how long it can last. Then there is the other appro, other side of our advocacy, which is the time and effort that I and our contracted lobbyists in Tallahassee, Capital City Consultants, specifically Scott Ross, um, will pursue on more BPS focused issues, including appropriations. Uh, our, our student ask that we've done for the last couple of years and bills that we persuade our delegation to carry for us. Uh, and what we do here locally is try to bring our local media tools to bear on supporting our priorities. And I have, uh, in the last couple of years have made the rounds to enlist formal support and endorsements from chambers of commerce and the EDC and others for our, um, CTE funding efforts. Just like to point out that I am not a registered lobbyist. So, so I, I, I play a, a support role to Scott and Nick in Tallahassee. Um, and tomorrow again, I would like to just let everybody know that we are gonna have our legislative luncheon uh, with our delegation from eleven thirty to one o'clock at Edgewood Junior Senior High School in the media center there. And based on their feedback too, we may refine our priorities a little bit more. And then, uh, get them on the earliest possible school board agenda at a meeting. You don't have to do that, but I think it gives a, a nice unanimous, um, power of a resolution to get those, uh, out in the open and, and approved publicly. to get those out in the open and approved publicly.
Okay. I would like to, since we have twenty minutes, do a couple things to kind of focus discussion a little bit. The first thing I'd like to do is make a strong recommendation, based on experience and what we see coming down the pike. And if you agree with it, fine, if you wanna change it, that's okay, but if it helps, I like to do that. I would like to recommend that our top five priorities, that we will spend most of our BPS and capital city consulting efforts on this year, be first and foremost, the much anticipated and floated and described initiative by Governor Ron DeSantis and Education Commissioner Richard Corcoran to quote, elevate and celebrate the teaching profession. And what they are working on now is what they hope will be game-changing increases to Florida teacher pay. Their outlook on it is less about any particular number, and far more about getting Florida out of number forty-seven and into the top twenty, so that this state can compete for top talent for our schools. I think in this case, a good position for us is to support their ends and not necessarily try to dictate the means, and let the professional budget writers figure out how they do that in Tallahassee.
One hundred percent agree.
Yep. Yes.
And that's the same approach that we had our first legislative committee meeting, beyond the establishment of the kind of five court, same approach that FSBA is taking.
Very good.
Issue for that, so I think it's unified with.
One thing that we've had on our agenda, it's also the FSBA's, that I would actually like to consider dropping, because it might become redundant, is the increase in the base student allocation. That's the first thing we just discussed, we'll probably happen with that. And if, I don't know what your takes are on narrowing the list of things that we do, but that would be something that we might not need necessarily to conclude on our list. The second thing I would strongly like to include on our list is our-
Matt, for expediency, can we, can I take stock after each one that you recommend?
Yes.
Because if we're just like, agree, go, then we can march right through this. So far, we all agree that number one is there.
Okay.
Number three, you jumped to increased base student allocation. He's asking that, he's recommending, right, that we drop that, because we're asking for money in the first one that would cover. And I tend to highly agree, do you all agree?
We agree.
Yep.
Okay, so done, we're gonna take that off.
Okay.
But you skipped over safe school resource officers, did you have a recommendation there at all?
That's up to you, I mean if-
I'd like to hear what your other top are, before, that's what I would like to know.
Okay, we can come back at this, definitely on the FSBA's priority list as well for safe schools. My second thing that I would recommend is our annual ask for funding for career technical education. Janice Schultz, who's here with us today, and I have discussed this. And what we would like to pursue is sort of a phase-two appropriation to complete the welding and manufacturing lab at Astronaut High School. Our first appropriation, which Senator Wright will be in Titusville, we'll help ceremonially present.
Thursday night, thirty?
Thursday, is, was to help us get the building done. What we'd like to pursue is the gear and the equipment that would be used to educate the students. We would like to ask for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, knowing that most of our appropriations, most appropriations get knocked down a little bit, so let's start with a healthy figure and-
Janice, were we able to use the welding machines that were donated from Titusville, City of Titusville at all?
We are loaned these.
And this is all for infrastructure to tie those together, and other things that we need? I mean, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars gonna cover the cost of what we need? Okay.
Manufacturing lab is costing probably three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
And our aviation still continues to cost twenty-five thousand a year, just to keep them respected.
Just keeps bringing planes in there.
We haven't bought any planes.
I know. Thank you. And I'm not using them for superintendent travel. You know I'm gonna spread that.
Thank you for clarifying.
I'm gonna put a picture of you inside that.
Okay, what's number three?
My third one was that we formally include a placeholder for students legislative ask. It's probably the most time-intensive thing that we work on, aside from ensuring that the appropriations get through the vetting process and the negotiations.
Even though there really isn't anything there being asked?
Well, we know there's gonna be one. In the last couple of years, we have made it the focal point of our visit to Tallahassee, and they've both been good, to elevate the students' voice. Two years ago, it was to seek the increasing supplement for mental health spending, which unfortunately, or fortunately, made it into the budget after the Barbara Stilman Douglas Act was passed. And last year it was about vaping, and those students are still getting a secret advantage of attention.
I've met with the students once, just last, excuse me, last week. We had some great discussion, as always, led by them, around what does vaping look like in their schools? And some very positive stories, they're seeing it on a decline. Unfortunately, they're seeing it still prevalent, particularly among the junior, senior high schools and middle school. So, that seems to be a gateway period for students, which would suggest that they are gaining access to those devices more readily. I don't wanna speak for the students, and we didn't get to the place of talking about them bringing their voice to Tallahassee. I wouldn't, but their concern, their interest was not to step away from this message, this effort, this cause, because, just because we've seen a decline, they aren't convinced that it is sustainable yet. So, I anticipate they may be interested in continuing that charge next, this year, to include, we never, they never did get allocation of tobacco-free tobacco dollars.
Okay, tobacco-free Florida?
Yes, tobacco-free Florida dollars allocated to vaping education, so.
And that's something that's still, I think when we went last year, a lot of it, the feedback was, oh, this is a federal issue, this is a whatever, that's the catch, but that can happen, the education dollars part can happen.
And we're starting much earlier, last year, we really had, it was late, it was December, January, before we really rallied their effort to go up in February, so.
Well, can't we add that to here? I don't like handing them something tomorrow that says, we want you to support something, but we don't know what it is, that sounds... We had good ideas in the past, we just, we hope it'll be a good idea this time.
Can I pause for one second? Ms. Moore, would you, would you agree with my assessment of the kids around the table in terms of, because, or would you suggest we need to have a conversation with them before we?
I think the only thing that was missing from that was that then the kids circled back around to what counseling and mental health services are available at their school, and not really understanding all the resources that were available. And they tied a connection between students' mental health and what they use to cope with stress. And so, I don't know how that correlates to what our ask is gonna be, but those were the two things they were complaining about.
And maybe that's the messaging. Kids owning the, helping get the message out of the mental health services we already have in place in our schools, because many of them didn't know they had a social worker, many of them didn't know that there was a mental health referral process. Oh, I don't think we have that, sources of strength, what is that? You have it at your school. So, they committed to being ambassadors in their schools to those resources, and maybe then we ask the state to be, to acknowledge. But what's cool is our kids made those connections. Our school leaders made that connection in our discussion a couple nights ago.
So, Matt, are you asking us just to leave a placeholder, or to leave this link where it is?
To clarify, these are my marching orders, as much as they are something to present to the delegation tomorrow for feedback. And we very often modify our document based on the feedback we get from the delegation. Sometimes they tell us something's DOA, they don't wanna touch it. Sometimes they tell us it's gonna take a couple more years of research. Sometimes they say that it's not a bill, it's not something that the state government needs to get involved with. So, we drop, add, and can adjust the language of our request based on their really good feedback. I would suggest we punch up this item a little bit to include the concepts of vaping and malhealth, see if they're aiming, going in that direction, and-
We may, we might, I don't wanna overpromise, be able to, we're gonna be at Edgewood, we could have our Edgewood representative join us for tomorrow's discussion. And it's, she was sitting right here, I forget her name.
Yeah, she just had the video.
Come on, Ms. Moore, you're better than this.
You'd be better than to ask me a name or a number.
Yeah, she was just on, um, morning show this week.
Yeah, yes, that's what she just did, a video on vaping.
Yep.
So.
Unless we have a clear ask, I feel like we're wasting their time. They're gonna say, what do you want from us? Well, we just want you to talk to this person, about what? Well, we think vaping's bad, like I-
Well, so for tomorrow, we might not have the ask.
Right, but at Edgewood, this is another good school that Dr. Mullins and I went to last year, where, okay, so this is a school that you wouldn't think they would have some mental health issues, but guess what? They do have mental health issues, and the counselors are struggling to keep going, so I don't know. There could be a tie-in somehow with, I don't know how, what the student feels, but.
Well, we're meeting tomorrow, we have approximately fifteen more minutes to settle this whole legislative priority, and the study's extremely vague, so.
Are you, for my purposes and directing my work in government community relations, are you comfortable if we have this on our list, but we don't necessarily make a topic of discussion tomorrow?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
I, I-
I don't wanna let the students off, I really wanna have a, have a student have a voice, I do.
But they need to have a voice, this is not, this is not a voice, this is a, this is a scene.
Yeah, but I feel like-
I don't mind adding it like after tomorrow, but I think when we talked, when we get our one hour a year with our legislators that they're giving us, you've got, it's gotta be simple and clear, here's the bullet list we want, they say yes and no. They get so aggravated and irritated when we ask, just ask, ask for too much money. They get irritated when we don't know what we want, when we don't have a clear ask, when we just say more money, and aren't clear on how much money. I mean, I think we have to be very specific.
And I, and I understand that a hundred, a hundred percent. What about this? So, we have on one side, vaping issue that we wanna do, but we're not a hundred percent sure on it, right? Because we have the two barriers of, what exactly do they need in Tallahassee for it to happen? And what exactly do our kids want? And then on the other side, you have the legislators who are standing there, and they need to be educated. So, is there a, is there a way to say that we would like to, for the first time, send up our delegation to work with you on crafting the legislation that actually would go into effect? Because when we did the All-American Flag Act, that's exactly what we did. We came out with this idea, it dropped, we worked with our delegation, formed it and everything else, in a different perspective. Does that make sense to you?
Send up what delegation?
Our delegation that's up there in Tallahassee. Sometimes they caucus for all kinds of different stuff. They'll caucus for leadership in healthcare, they'll caucus over here, they'll caucus over there.
So, what do you wanna ask them for tomorrow?
Why wouldn't we caucus up in Tallahassee with our delegate, our student-led delegation to come up with a policy that they want written between the two of them? It would be landmark.
So, but you're, you're saying you want to put on here that the students want what?
We collaborate with the legislators to draft a piece of a law.
That does what, reduces use of vaping at middle school students? Are you speaking for the students, saying that's what the legislation they wanna do this year?
If I, given the time I've had with them, I would, such as Chris, join in. I would not be surprised if they said, we wanna continue the cause, we've gotten attention, the problem isn't solved. They wanted Florida tobacco, why can't I remember that?
Tobacco-free Florida.
Tobacco-free Florida, they wanted tobacco-free Florida funding to be allocated specifically to vaping education, like.
If we wanna put something like that on here, specific, and then change it later, if you find out the students wanna do something else, you know, I can support that, but I just feel strongly that, I've talked to enough of them that I can see the attitude come at us now, and then they'll be shut down from hearing things, so.
Understood, yeah, I mean, we can definitely, um-
I don't, I really kinda feel like what we should do is just make, make note on here, that our student leaders are still engaged and are working on refining what their focus is going to be for this year.
And we would just appreciate if, if they would, you know, keep opportunities open for discussion when they refine their... I think our legislators appreciated speaking with our students. I think they would much rather speak with our students than speak with us in some instances, quite frankly. And I don't wanna get ahead of the students by speaking for the students, but I do think that they need to know that our students are still heavily engaged and looking forward to their continued support in that civic engagement opportunity for our students.
Well, and even if we provide, even if we're, I don't want, don't want us to step in there tomorrow and speak for the students, but as a continuation of the conversation we had last spring with all of them in Tallahassee on vaping issue, we brought this student in to have five minutes, what's going on in your school with vaping, then that is eye-opening for them. And we're not speaking for this year's current group, but it'll be a good follow-up on last year's conversations that we had. But again, this is, this is Matt's job, just as much or more than it is our presentation tomorrow. We're telling Matt what to do.
So, one of the things I meant by what I said was is that when we did the All-American Flag Act, right after that is when the state legislature called for a bill every year from a student-led organization, SGA or wherever it is, and now that bill's in process, right? The going up and having a caucus with them is going to give them not only the ability to talk to our kids, but then also drive the awareness throughout the entire state that Provost is leading
in the vaping issue at the state by legislatively caucusing with their delegation over what to do. That was all of it.
When would you have to have the students up there for something like that?
They'd have to be pretty soon, within the next couple of weeks, yeah. I mean, but they would do it, they're student government leaders, they'd get up there. It's just an idea, you know, maybe you talk to them about it, but I promise you, if you said, would you like to caucus with our kids up in Tallahassee over this issue to craft policy? They would love that idea, and they would look forward to it.
Do you think that needs to be on this language on here, or this conversation?
I just think that would fix what we're trying to get at, that's all.
I think you're going from the right place there, Matt. I think that, I think they would love to do that, the only, the issue is we have to move fast. And we're on a tight timeline regardless, because remember, session starts early this year. So, you know, even pulling to, I don't, I don't know the frequency of your meetings scheduled between now and then, but it's, we, we're on a tight turnaround, because it's election year.
And if I remember correctly, last year we didn't start by directing our own language, we started by pulling some drafted language and adding to it. So, it, it would just be having caucus, being part of the caucus before that language is officially drafted. Is that my understanding what you're saying?
Well, I, you know, I, here's what's gonna end up happening. No matter what we say, and no matter what the legislators do, they're gonna submit the bill into bill drafting. Bill drafting's gonna craft it however it is, and they're gonna change it. And then it's gonna spit back out, and then they're gonna work it. So, she's right about the fact that we have to do it quickly. And a quasi-conversation around the table can get excitement and drive towards the policy. If we do it back here, it's just Provost doing it. We do it up there, it then becomes, holy cow, we've got SGA members from an entire county up here to discuss the number-one issue that there are, we're leading it. So, that's what I was saying. And it doesn't have to be that we have to have a meeting in order to discuss what they're already discussing. We just have them go up, and on the bus, you have six hours to tell them, here's what our plan is, this is what we're doing. And you can have the legislators just give a date where they can all get together, just an idea.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from you all is that you, majority of you all want to leave this on as is for now, but we also wanna discuss caucusing with them, our student, if we can fit it in a short-term schedule, is that?
Is that crazy, or is this good?
I think we should ask, I think we should ask them how they would go about doing it. And, and let them give us some other expert advice based on what's easiest for them.
Are we interested in having a little five-minute, if our student is available?
I say let them carry the whole thing.
So, I, five-minute conference interview, let them ask our questions?
Are you guys okay with moving that to being number five out of them all? Because then we could wrap up, we, these are important things, that we know what we want, it's identified. Also, our students are coming up with something, here's our student from last year, we'd like you to hear from her, and something's gonna develop out of their next two meetings, is that for, for a group?
Yes.
Katie, you go with that?
Yeah, since the students aren't cooking for us, we need to have a student touch.
They're not cooking for us?
Unfortunately, it fell through for us, so we were going with the next best thing, and we're having one of our best business partners. Oh, yeah, we were working with-
Who deny us?
Calling it which one.
They just couldn't get there and-
It's too early in your power. Okay, okay, we are short on time, so we've got one and five, what do you, oh, no, we've got one, two, five. What do you want for three and four?
Well, what I would, what I would recommend we do next is, we see what kind of traction some of these policy proposals that our cabinet and others have brought forward to discuss, and board members as well, and see which of those things that seem both unanimously supported by you and have general support by the delegation also wind up making it into bill form in some way, and get after those. I can't say which of these are, but I would like, in our remaining minutes here, ask you if there's anything on this list of ideas that you have concerns about, you'd like to pull, or find some other way to go about addressing the issue. No, it's free.
I don't have a concern, but I think to the support Eastern Florida State College teaching program, I think that should be, I think that's important, and I would think that we would have traction on that because right now, everybody knows there's a teaching shortage, so how can we incorporate more teachers, more people to go into teaching, so I would-
That's a, pretty much a capital city calling the central UCF and telling them, do not. Because that goes, they're the only ones that denied it last time, right? Well, I think the post-secondary- Well, I think the, uh, post-secondary, uh.
Committee has to agree to it.
Committee had mixed, uh, no, that was, that was actually a DOE, po- post-secondary chan- chancellor of post-secondary probably had a large voice in that, so. So the last time we did that, UCF blocked us because their communist base, so what ends up happening is, is that, um, this year we provided and they're the only ones that are gonna go against us, so being affected that may be an opportunity for them to just do it that way.
We would see it, okay.
Our legislators know that it's there, but it's not a, a need for us to go to the state legislature and and make an argument, Matt, am I right?
Okay.
And then I'm stating it's now, that if UCF blocks us again, that I am not gonna be quiet this time. Just so everybody knows, that will not be in my.
I think, I think, I think ascertaining what the process is is one of the things we'll have to, yeah, but any place that I've found where we can partner or, um, that I've joined forces with other key people in Provence County or interests, uh, that also serve ours, uh, would seem like good things to put on the list. Um, there were two issues that, um, I I'm I'm fond of the military readiness, JROTC idea, I think that's something that we might get some real support on among our delegation tomorrow.
Yep.
Especially with Senator Wright being the chair of the Senate Armed, uh, Veterans and and Military Affairs Committee. I know that there were, um, you haven't raised any specific objections, but I know that there, we've got people here who came prepared to answer questions if you needed, I know there were two issues that you had questions about directly to me. One was the, um, uh, seeking authority to place students who need intensive supports.
Yeah, right. I wanna read over that, is it, this all new change languages from what you, languages, language from what you emailed? Yeah, I want to read over that.
Okay.
Can you give us a short, short synopsis of what you really want and why you want it? That would be better.
Yeah. I, I think, even go far back, this is what now, four, five years old?
Uh, yeah, twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, so can you speak for a moment, pre-two thousand thirteen and now current? That makes sense.
Yeah. Well, I think you want me to get. I'll start and then she can correct me. So, um, when students are referred to services, at that point, parents have the, have the option of saying, no, I I don't wanna go through the evaluation or I do. From that point on, once we've all agreed to an evaluation and students get tested, um, it becomes an IEP decision about what is the best placement for a student, what meets that student's needs. And pre-two thousand thirteen, um, that, that was the case regardless of the level of service, that we had to say, in order to meet this student's free and appropriate public education, their faith, this is where, this is the placement that best suits the student's needs. In, uh, and and there were processes in place if the board, uh, if the IEP team and the parents disagreed, and the parents are part of the IEP team, but if there was a disagreement between the school-based personnel and and the parent, there was a way for the parent to say, stop everything, I'm gonna go to process and we're gonna figure out if other people agree with this decision. In two thousand and thirteen, um, there was language added to the statute that said, if the placement is a special day school. So if the child's behavior was, um, necessitated him or her being placed in a special day school in order for them to receive their faith, in order for them to be educated in the way that it was appropriate for them, that the parent could say, no, and that it was the, then the school board's responsibility to go do process, um, to prove that that child needed that restrictive setting. So, and not only that, if the parent said yes and the child was placed in a special day school, at any point that the parent decided they didn't want their child at a special day school, they could withdraw and they'd come back to, um, to the, the, the setting where they basically left from. So what we're asking is for a special day school placement to be considered just the same as any other placement and to go back to the checks and balances that are already in place to protect parents and students. Um, but when we have a student who is having difficulty learning because of extreme, um, behavior concerns, um, that we may want to to educate them in their least restrictive environment and allow that process to work.
This is like Fieldston, is that the type of school that, where we?
Fieldston, yeah.
Right, and, and this specific consent, this parental consent for a separate day school, which is our field, uh, uh, Riverdale, it's a Florida thing, it's not a federal thing. This is just an added Florida, then they added it to the state of Florida. So if I was in Texas, this would not apply. This is just a Florida thing. At the federal level, there is no consent for you to go with separate day school placement, it's just part of the continuum of a placement, that's just one of them, you could, you don't have to give parental consent. In the state of Florida, they added sad extra parental consent, that piece.
Wonder why. Well, I, I mean, if, if, I've heard stories and not if.
Yes, and and you can think, state of Florida, not just Provence, there are some separate day schools that were just for students with intellectual disabilities.
Anecdotaly.
It's, we're, we're thinking behavioral because that's the two schools that we have, but in other school district, there were s- s-, uh, we used to call them back in Provence, ESE center schools.
There's a slight issue, some here.
Where all the students who had intellectual disability went to a specific school and they were not in their neighborhood school. We don't do that. Our separate day schools are yours for our kids with our severe behavioral disabilities that need that level of support and that's where we provide that service. Other school districts in Florida are not like that. Some of them do have ESE centers where I believe there's the.
So this law would apply to them and if a parent, they have no recourse, the district, and we have a great district and a great team, but if we're going for state law,
Right.
you know, there are districts, uh, I think Sarasota's struggling right now where they, I s- put this child in, I, I won't get into all the details, but I see where where this has happened before and this child missed the opportunity that the parent was fighting for for years because the district
My, I get it.
potentially made a really bad choice for that child because they weren't doing their due diligence, so. I, I don't know what the c- I see w- how we need it and how it would help us, but.
Would you feel comfortable if the ask was specifically for behavioral placement?
That makes sense to me.
Yes, I think I could go there.
Because I feel like this plays into safety in our schools on a huge level.
Right.
And if you go back, Nicholas Cruz, he was at a separate day school and he broke consent, so that's how we ended up back at his neighborhood, it's going back to the whole disciplinary and got him to, so.
Correct.
Right.
I can easily support it if it's a behavioral issue.
Boom.
Because of the disruption, the safety, there's lots of pieces in that.
Right.
I like, that makes sense to me, that really makes a lot of sense.
So, could you all?
But behavior issues or behavior school? Because if we wanna refer to Harpland again, Nicholas Cruz, I think, had some diagnosis, would that have kept him from them saying, no, that's his disability, the reason he acts this way and then.
But he did.
For example.
I don't think so. I think if he had a manifestation, I don't think that would have flown, uh-huh. E- e- even though you have a disability, you know right from wrong and your behavior, it's, yeah, I don't think so.
Right.
And you, you would also look at, we're looking at our severe behavioral kids and, I mean, we were looking at numbers yesterday with a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty district wide that we backwound and those placements were.
Hundred and fifty, yeah.
So we're not looking like a big, but they need that level of support and it's hard to support those students in, in current parents, a lot in schools, so that's what we're.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the, with the behavior.
It's very clear on behavior.
Yeah, and if we can somehow tie it to the safety, I like that, 'cause that's a good buy-in.
Okay. I think that's what I sound, wha- from what I heard from our cab people, that was the primary motivation for this. We had students that we thought were particularly threatening because of whatever reason, we thought that that was the right place to put them, but we have this added barrier that winds up being very, either keeping students where we don't want them or costing us tens of thousands of dollars and months in court to go.
Not only that, oftentimes the student that, the, the student that is struggling with making good choices from a behavioral standpoint because of various reasons, right? Could be environment, could be disability, could be a lot of things. But that student is not likely to be successful in a school with eight hundred students walking the halls, you know, larger classrooms, whereas that, the student may be much more successful in a smaller setting with additional supports in place.
Yeah.
So I think it's, you know, it's, it's a win-win really for students that need that special support.
Yeah.
I just, I don't like when parents can't drive the direction of their student's education, but if it's behavior and threats and, you know, security of other students and we have to, we have to have a fight, so. Okay, it sounds like we all agree on that one. I have, um, you have the mental health funding separate from the budget priorities category, which it seems like that would be rolled into one. But I have, as much as I am an advocate for mental health and for school resource officers, do we wanna have, first of all, if we do those, I feel like they should kind of be maybe combined together.
Together?
But should we even have those on here in a year where we're supporting maybe some massive funding through the teaching profession? I, I don't, I mean, I, I don't, I wanna hear your thoughts.
The question is, is do we need to really add that when we're going after a lot of money in other areas and it might already be part of the package that they're doing, so we're actually using one of our actual line items to not
Okay.
waste is what it is. And and I, I agree with you, I think it could almost be elevated into, we're looking forward to support the governor in his endeavors, which should include mental health and those areas, you know what I mean? That could be in there.
Yeah, you could even write in, we out, like, elevate something else, I would kinda water that down, maybe you can't have those in the budget.
Yeah, maybe, just another perspective.
Yeah.
Because sometimes we see money pots be scooped up and put over here for another initiative, I would at least suggest, number one, be elevate and celebrate. And then we state while maintaining current, at l- minimum, current levels of funding for school resource officers and mental health.
I like, yes, I think that, it's that way they don't borrow from Peter of PayPal or whatever, whatever that stimulus is.
Right.
Peter, what? Maintaining or expanding opportunities because if our state legislators can lobby for additional funds from federal government to support mental health and SROs,
Right.
I certainly want them to take advantage of that opportunity.
Right.
I don't want them taking away from teacher salary to, to, you know what I mean?
Right.
So I d- I don't want them taking our money away from SROs and mental health, but I also want them to understand that should this situation arise without taking money away from teacher's salary, we would welcome you putting the effort in to bring those dollars to Florida.
That would be great discussion when we get to that, that basis.
Maybe that is just discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because, I mean, I think we've all heard second and third hand, they're not gonna probably fund more school resource officers because they think the district should be using the Free Guardian program.
Yeah, it's really.
So, it's, it's a wasted ask at this point of just looking like we've.
Yeah.
Right.
Did you get that, Matt?
Yep.
So number one would have like two sub-bulleted things, does that sound?
Okay.
Yep, yep. That we do not want this to come at the expense of current funding support for SROs and mental health programs, okay.
Yes, bingo.
Yep.
Okay, so you have, see if I'm, you and I are on the same page. We have number one, the elevate and celebrate teaching profession with the sub-bullet not at the cost of other things.
Mm-hmm.
Number two, the astronaut high welding program. And then do you have number three as military readiness, JROTC?
It could be, I mean, for purposes tomorrow.
Okay, I, this is just, I wrote number three because that's my number.
I mean, it's, it, it, you know.
I'm surprised this didn't pass last year.
What the?
Didn't we talk about this last year?
Military.
There's, there's two hundred, there's a three, a year where you say, I'm surprised.
Yeah, number OTC, oh, okay, yeah, somebody has to be passionate. Oh, okay, still.
Yeah, um, I, I, I think that, that, I will probably include our number one or two things at the top so that we can talk about those first tomorrow. As for the rest of it, we'll, we'll probably leave them in, in, in kind of the order that they are now for now to see where things lead.
You're gonna take out the, the mental health line funding and the SRL line funding, right? I'm trying to shrink this down so it's not overwhelming, trying to make it as simple.
Yeah, yes. Thank you, I appreciate that.
And even though we, I asked for extra language in that last one, is, if there's any way, maybe, Chris, you can look at it and shh.
I'm, yeah, I'm looking at the statute language now and trying to figure out how to change it, so just look at behavior unit, so we're, we're actively looking at it.
Do we wanna include the, would we want to consider including elevating the status of BPK teachers under the elevate and celebrate teaching?
Okay.
I think we should, well. I, I think that needs to be a part, so we're, we're at a place where BPK is a focus, right, at the state level, both for Richard Corcoran and for the governor
Right.
or for Richard Corcoran because of the governor, however you wanna look at it. Um, so we know that BPK and early childhood is gonna be a focus this year. Um, they have had some, some, uh, House committee conversation and some pushback on making BPK teachers eligible for best and brightest. Um, in addition to that, the, um, FSBA has removed that portion from their platform.
Okay.
Only the BPK teacher portion from their platform because they felt like we would be infringing on private enterprise because not all BPKs are in schools.
Oh, okay.
So, but I, I think we have a strong argument from the standpoint of, if you look at the performance data on BPK in our schools compared to BPK in outside centers, there is significant disparity there, right? We know that our schools are doing better and part of the reason that our schools are doing better is because our BP- BPK teachers are required to be certified teachers.
Yeah.
If however, they wanna continue to expand high-quality BPK programming, they're gonna have to do something to attract and retain teachers there as well.
Okay.
And with the current setup, there's nothing to attract and retain BPK teachers in the public school setting because they're missing out on so much that even a kindergarten teacher receives.
Okay.
So if the state is gonna prioritize BPK and really put efforts into it, I think we have to find a way to include our BPK teachers that are teaching in public schools in that ten, twenty, what is it, Amy, ten, twenty-three?
Ten, twenty?
The definition of, of teachers where, you know, we've, we've argued about best and brightest.
Ten, twelve?
Ten, twelve, point three four.
No, four, three four.
I think, um, because otherwise there's, there's no reason for anyone to be a BPK teacher in our schools, you know what I mean? They would just say, well, I'd rather be, unless they're just really passionate about BPK, but it just makes sense for them when they're not eligible for best and brightest, they're not eligible for drop. They're paying the same amount into retirement as a kindergarten teacher is paying into retirement that makes the same salary, but they're not getting the same return on that, in turn, retirement because of it.
Right.
So there's a lot there, but I, I feel like it's a conversation, I feel like it's a difficult one to bullet. Like, I, our legislators really have to understand the issue to get behind it.
But, but, but for the, but, but listening to you, I would want to add to this little paragraph that, that we would, we, we would give school district-employed BPK teachers who have, who are certified, um, the same status.
Yes, yes.
And, and when I, and I sat on the phone with the, like, owner, quasi-owner of Fiddler's, which is the, the test, right, and, and he went on for an hour about it. The main problem that they have is twofold, is that the BPK programs do not have the opportunity in the rural settings. So that's where a lot of these, these, the arguments for allowing the BPK to be in the, the lower areas is that they provide the service in the lower settings.
Mm-hmm.
So, and that was, that was part of what we, we talked about. So I think that that is correct in the fact that we need to allow that, but then if they are in our people taking our paychecks and they were being tested and being held accountable by some sort of standard which follows the other best and brightest, then in that case, and he agreed with that, he said that that was there. And I talked to two of the other lobbyists that said that may be the key to getting our people as a part of it, is to define the difference between
Yes.
us, ours, our individuals and the, um, individuals that are inside the private ones.
Yeah.
So, Ms. T, do you think that should be a separate line item or a sub-bullet under elevate and celebrate teaching profession?
Well, that's a couple of things.
I think we can bullet under elevate and celebrate, elevate and celebrate.
Okay.
Ten, twelve, oh, one, two.
Ten, twelve, oh, one, two. Okay, and does everyone wanna leave on, there was one more we didn't discuss, uh, active shooter drills.
Active shooter drills. I, that's reducing it for both levels, right, from ten a month?
That's correct.
I mean, not ten a month, sorry, that would be, that would be a.
Yeah.
One a month, ten fire drills and ten, um, uh, incident drills.
Uh, this is.
But two in the first.
One, seven.
Yeah, two on the first month, it is full.
Right, so, re- currently, it's twenty drills and every time they come back in, they have to watch.
Points. Four.
I think we need to keep this on here.
Go.
Yeah.
I, that's a lot of, yeah.
It's excessive, yeah.
And, and I, just to clarify, this is not a Provence-defined recommendation, it is actually defined by another district presented to the commission, uh, MSD commission, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
That's correct, and the MSD is gonna be, uh, creating language to support legislation in this area anyway. They're going to go forward and bring this to the legislation. It's just possibly, we could say, we two, like Seminole County and like Hillsborough County are in favor of this.
We endorse, we endorse this inquisitive legislation.
That makes sense to me, yeah, my.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, the other one that we skipped though, Tina, is the upper ex- yeah, the substitute.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry, I put a check mark on it, yeah, we need that one.
Um, and I will say that the, um, FSBA is including this in their platform right now as well, but they have also included, they, they have removed substitute teachers and made it short-term employees. Because then we can bring back bus drivers, we can bring back, um, I mean, any, yeah, any number of employees.
Do it.
Um, but especially in those, those critical needs areas.
So the, so instead of saying allow retired instructional personnel?
It'll. Allow retired personnel.
Short-term personnel.
For, allow retired personnel to
Oh.
become employed as.
Short-term employees.
Short-term.
At short, okay. So is it substitute, right?
Without impact, whatever, yeah.
You got that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Do you have any more questions? Or is that a clear as much?
Yeah.
We will maximize our.
I think I'm gonna get this uh edited up um and uh a fresh version ready for tomorrow and we'll be good to go. I feel much I've got much better clearer direction on what we'll be looking at.
I know it's hard for you with the five separate of us and five different opinions, so it's nice when we can all get together and.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good to hear.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, anybody else have anything else for?
And we promise not to fuss about speed tomorrow.
It's gonna be good.
I know it's gonna be. It was great last time.
It's edible art. It's uh one of our best business partners and uh they did the the Partners in Education Fair. It's really good. And um of course, all the food is paid for by donations from our other business partners as well, so it's something to celebrate too.
Nice.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Does anyone have anything else they need to discuss? I mean, you're.
Hey, Matt, did we invite city official on Thursday or is it just Loki?
I know. Yeah, I invited Chamber City.
Okay.